Good evening. Welcome to the June 10th Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We are coming to order at what looks like 7:03 tonight. My name is Katie Silberger. I am the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And let me start to my right, we have Dave Kakamo, Ellen Rocco, Vicki Danskin, and our newest member Joanna Weiss. And we would like to welcome Joanna. And we look forward to a number of years working together with you. Also present, we have our Secretary Rogan O'Donnell, who is sitting behind the computer. We have Planning Director Bren White. And we have our Village Board Liaison Sally Rhodes. On tonight's agenda, we have one new ZBA application. We will approve the draft minutes from our previous meeting, May 13th. And then we will go into executive session to discuss a matter of retaining an attorney, a legal question. So the first item on the agenda is ZBA application. It's called ZBA 1410. 51 Main Street is proposing an area variance for a mixed commercial and residential building. Would someone make a motion to open the discussion? Tuckins? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. So would you like to join us at the table? Okay. So, uh...
Can we match you with the opening? Can we match?
Yes.
Alright, so...
Uh, you may be a little more beyond that one, so I've got some sort of copies. It's no...
I have two minutes, so... Let me... Um... Wait. So first of all, let me read the referrals we have gotten from the building inspector. Um, just a second, I gotta pull them up here. There we go.
They're all in the packet.
They're all in the packet, hold on. Help me, help me, help me. Here it is. I got it, I got it, I got it, sorry. So, this is from the building inspector, notice of determination. The property is 51 Main Street, SBL 86.143-1-9-200, .06 acres, or 2,614 square feet, in a zone of B2. The existing use is a single-story restaurant. The proposed use, two-story restaurant with a third-story dwelling. And his opinion reads as follows. "The proposed use, limited business retail restaurant with a mixed-use apartment above the first floor. Both are principal permitted uses in the B1 district, which are principal permitted uses in the B2 district. The uses will require 2,500 square feet for the retail use and 5,000 square feet for the residential use. A total of 7,500 square feet is the minimum lot size required for the mixed use. The property has only 2,614 square feet. You will require a variance for the lot size. The mixed use may create a minimum lot width situation. Commercial uses require minimum 25 feet at the building line, which you have. But the residential use requires minimum 50 feet at building line, which you do not have. Since you will have to seek a variance from the zoning board, I will also have you ask for determination if a mixed use would follow the commercial setbacks. If they decide that the use should also meet residential setbacks, then a variance will also be required. I suggest that you proceed to the planning board first to start a site review, plan... a site plan review, excuse me, before applying for any variances. The site plan reviews may cause or change some requirements based on their reviews. From this department perspective, this proposed application will create a more pleasing and aesthetic look for this section of Main Street." Thank you, Mark Jaffe, Village of New Palt's Code Enforcement Officer. We also have a memorandum from our Planning Director Bren White. And this is RE Planning Board 14-03, 51 Main Street, 86.143-1-9.200. And it reads as follows. "The applicant has proposed a mixed-use structure for this parcel with restaurant space on the first and second floors and an apartment on the third floor. From a planning perspective, the application looks like a solid one. The B2 zone is an appropriate one for mixed use, which typically strengthens neighborhood character and promotes pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environments, which the village should and does encourage. The applicant has adjusted the original plan to include porous pavement in the small parking lot. Since the parcel is currently at 100% impervious surface, any porous additions will certainly be an improvement on potential drainage and stormwater issues in the area. The addition of porous pavement will bring the project into compliance for impervious lot coverage, which I was concerned about during the pre-application phase. The applicant proposes two parking spots to be included on-site, which is what currently exists. According to a local law passed in April, I believe, of last year, the planning board should quote 'exercise discretion in determining off-street parking requirements for non-residential uses throughout the village.' Based on this code, the applicant does not require any parking variances. The proposed use requires 2,500 square feet plus 5,000 square feet for limited business retail, the restaurant, and the residential third-floor apartment respectively. The parcel in question is 2,614 square feet, which would require a substantial area variance for the lot size. The ZBA should appropriately consider the intent of the B2 zoning that permits mixed-use projects. While the village clearly wants to encourage mixed uses, there are no parcels on this block and very few in the downtown area that are large enough to not require an area variance for such use. The question from the board's point of view should be, is this an appropriate space for mixed use? I believe the answer is yes. While the area variance requested is a substantial one, the board has other equally weighted criterion to consider when deciding on this variance. The proposal seems like an appropriate project for this site and a use and scale that the village should continue to encourage." And finally, we have a memo from the Village Planning Board Attorney, which reads, "In the B2 district, core district, core retail, business retail, is a principal permitted use, which includes all uses in limited business retail, which includes restaurant. Further, all principal in the B..." It says I district are permit... B1? Okay. "...are permitted, which includes mixed-use apartments above first floor consisting of not more than three bedrooms. Under the bulk schedule, Schedule B, by the proposed use..." Excuse me. "The proposed use requires 5,000 square feet for the dwelling unit and 2,500 square feet for the restaurant, or 7,500 square feet in total. With only 2,614 square feet in the lot, the applicant will need a substantial ZBA variance. Similarly, the required width at the building line for a dwelling unit is 50 feet and for the restaurant, 25 feet. It isn't clear if these are additive in a mixed-use building, but a ZBA variance will be required as existing frontage is 16 and a half feet. Heights of 35 feet and three stories appear to be satisfied." So, from the planning board, we received the following motion. Mr. Stephan moved to give a positive recommendation to the ZBA for the reasons set forth in the Village Planning Director's Memo. Mr. Zealer seconded. We had four ayes, zero nays, one absent, and the motion carried. So, do you have any comments regarding your application?
That's all, so good. I feel much more clear on it. I can't, I was... That's it. It's... Well, I guess I'll add is, if you do the math, it's 4886 square foot is the narrative. 75 minus 21, 2614.
4886?
Yeah, so I'm on the twenty.
Okay.
And the building at the front is 28, about 28 for... And there is, the narrowest point is 16.
It's an odd lot.
Yeah, it's all an hourglass.
Yes.
So, you know, we have a... Just to get a sense of scale, this is not a big building. It's 16 feet wide, that's probably as big as many of them are bedrooms.
Yes.
But maybe narrower in the back. So, that's what we're talking about. So, double the area in something that's 16 feet wide, you know, stop. And it is lesser equivalent to the existing buildings, you know, the area, as we're proposing the existing. So, it's not like it's a mess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to ask any questions?
Um, he is going to be living in the...
Okay. You're going to be owning it?
Yeah, something over.
Okay, and so you'll be living there. Uh, the only question I have is, can we put a stipulation on this if we approve it that if he sells the place, whoever buys the place has to live there?
Can't be a rental.
Okay, can't be a rental. But yeah, that's...
I don't know that we could do that, but I think we could stipulate that it's a single... Well, I mean...
We could stipulate whatever we want.
For me, it's like a great apartment.
But could we stipulate that it could have no more than a certain number of bedrooms and be occupied by a single family?
It's like it can't be occupied by a college student.
Well, a college student could be a family.
No, I think if we're going to do anything, we have to say that it cannot be a rental career.
Thank you for your plan.
I'm not positive we can do that, but I'd look into it.
Could we do like a maximum, you know how like places such as this have a maximum occupancy? Could it be a maximum occupancy apartment?
It would be automatically because of its size.
Okay.
So, the building code would say...
What is the maximum occupancy of this?
Well, we're proposing a two-bedroom. I have a plan of it if you want to see it.
Are the bedrooms large enough to be a single bed?
Yeah, there is. I'll show you the, I don't know, the plan, hell, but I'll show you. Again, remember, this is 16 feet here, so that bedroom is, you know, nine, 10.
We're not going to talk tonight.
That's a, that's a single bedroom.
I can't...
And that's also a single bedroom. Now, I guess, now, the other thing is bedrooms need blockable windows. And we can only, this is a lot line, so this glass, any glass on this line is fixed. So, we couldn't sneak more bedrooms in. I mean, I guess you could do is, no, you can't, because you need an egress window. Can't do an egress window on a lot line because of fire. You can't egress into someone's fire. So, the only places for bedrooms possibly are needed here. I mean, there's no intent. We're showing the beds. The intent is a two-bedroom. I mean, this is the whole rest of the apartment, the kitchen. I guess you could cram another bedroom, but that's not...
Yeah.
You couldn't get to this bedroom.
Basically, bedroom for me, and I have all my family and friends from Brooklyn, so when they visit, there's someplace for them to stay. That's, yeah, it gets you.
I think it's on here, it's 1420, 1400 square foot.
Right, so what we could do in, you know, we still have a public hearing before we're going to be making any motion. But, you know, I think we've really got to sort of focus on what they're asking the basis for.
Yeah, I mean, we can put stipulations on that.
We certainly can. We certainly can.
Well, we have to get it checked out, so we know what our letter to... Do you have an elevation of this?
Yes. Want to see that?
Sure.
Okay. This is, we're working with the, sorry, I only have one copy of this. Okay. This is the adjacent building that has a Mediterranean cafe. And this is Neco. So, what we did is do something to kind of scale between those. And I gave a package to the planning board, which I don't agree with, but it's, you know, the former pharmacy, Black's Pharmacy across the street, that's now the Coffee House?
Yeah.
That has kind of that grid of glass, which they opened up, thank God. Remember when it was closed? It's hard. Sorry, as a kid, I... Anyway, but, so this, that was kind of, that's the thought here. And also that we're kind of trying to get light in the building. And the bulk of the facade can have windows, so... There you go. So, the articulations in the facade, the scale, the upper floor is set back 19 feet and about 10 feet. You can look on the plan, I'll show you much. And that's purposeful. So, this is the Neco side. It's kind of cut off here. You can see it here. So, that's the corner of it. So, that's, that's the...
That's the corner of Neco sushi, is that what you're saying?
Correct. This is the back. That's the front corner. So, that's kind of right here. So, this is stepped back and away from that building, so you're never proceeding more than a two-story on that. I mean, that's the purpose.
Basically, it's from Main Street. You're like on IP and you're looking down Main Street towards Mulholland. Alright, like, if I had that third floor right up front to the front, it would just pop out and somewhere. It's that back, it just blends in.
We're being...
I don't understand how to interpret the elevation of the front of the building with those two little globes on top. One of those...
Oh, this is the third, these things?
Yeah.
These things? No, these things. This is the third floor, that's the face of this apartment. And that's the window of this bedroom and this...
The blue things are windows?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I can't see it because it's so pale.
Yeah.
So, this is the building?
Behind.
Gotcha. These are windows without grids and... Okay, now I see.
Set back.
Oh, yeah.
See, that's my confusion.
There you go.
My confusion is that in this diagram, the roof terrace and the setback appear to be on the Moonlight Cafe side of the building, because this is Main Street, so you've got it over on the left.
It's on both.
Oh, it's on both, it's setback.
Yeah, there's no, there's no...
This would go to the street.
You can see that.
I don't understand, is there a deck which faces Main Street?
Yeah.
Oh.
And there's a parapet. The wall of the parapet comes up and has a sound barrier, because he doesn't really want to hear Main Street in his bedroom. So, the deck is a buffer zone.
How tall is it?
The parapet? It's code 3 feet. That's what's shown here for residential. I didn't want to go up high, I want to keep this low, because that's, it's under this corner.
So, in the future, there could be people in the apartment just kind of hanging out on the, on the deck, raising cane if they're rental people, right there over Main Street.
As opposed to the ones on Main Street? I don't know what the point is, but okay. So, okay. Yeah, I think the idea of this is to try to buffer from Main Street, maybe plants and Mediterranean Greek, you know, feeling out there. Olive trees, sun coming in from the south, because that's that beautiful south exposure. So, I'm thinking of it more glass inside, but isolated from the street.
It's almost like that New Orleans feel, like the terrace is overlooking the Main Street.
Yeah.
My, I just wondered how that would look with the rest of the buildings, which don't have that type of...
You won't see it.
You're in the building, you don't see it.
You will not see it.
That's the point.
You won't see the terrace at all, or people leaning out over?
Well, if they're leaning over, yeah, but if like someone's standing right here, they're probably won't see it.
It would be totally obscure.
Yeah, from a sidewalk film.
You couldn't...
So, you can just see your nine-month-three feet.
Oh, if you're standing right against it, I mean, the building, you're not going to see, it would be difficult to see that.
Is there any safety issue with it just being three feet? Does there have to be some kind of...
That's the code, that's just...
Code is 3 feet. For residential.
Okay.
Commercial is 42.
How, how, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask about building materials and colors.
Design is a variant, really.
I know, but I'm curious.
Colors, we were looking at a light gray similar, and I have a whole package of the planning board, I apologize, just not feeling well, I forgot to bring. I have it on my laptop there, I couldn't go too bad. Showing it. It's a stone base, it's light gray for durability, as we all know. And a stucco, we're taking a chance, but I think we'll do plywood behind it instead of foam, so they won't make holes in it as they walk back.
Well, I'll say maybe on the first be like a granite stone. And that's on there. Above, where they can't really bust it up, will be all California stucco.
Right, which is, is pretty durable material. So, that, that material extends on the sides and the back end of the building. The glass is clear, it's not, it's as clear as I can get it. I'm not going to go for any mirror glass. I want to make it black, you know, just disappear.
And is the, the restaurant on the second story is glass on the front?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the line is, right?
Yeah, this line is actually the canopy, so you can see it here on that section of the ventilation, coming out four feet, so it's kind of a ring, you know, over the entry coverage.
Which is, it's hard to imagine without this.
What are A, B, and C here?
Those are, those are sent to the company to find out how much it costs for those lot line windows.
Fire-rated windows.
Oh, those are windows.
Because when you're building up on the lot line, they have to be fire-rated windows.
So, that's just residue of what I sent them, saying, this is the sizes, please don't hurt us too much.
Okay, I just, I just couldn't figure out what those were.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, those windows will not get any larger, they'll probably get smaller, just due to cost. The intent is to, those are mountain view windows, they're lean, they're going to be most beautiful for the restaurant.
There are five criteria that we want to consider. Do you have another question?
I do have just one question.
Yeah.
The absence to the apartment.
With the, from the back.
And it's separate from...
From the restaurant, and it's two staircases, because there's two bedrooms, means two entrances.
In and out, or...
Yeah.
Okay, so, but it's, so you, when you're in here, you have, you're going to have to go out to the home. You don't have to...
Oh, yes, the restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah, the restaurant, the stairs are right here.
Right.
You go down to the first floor, you walk out the door.
Right, right, that's...
And just the emergency stairs.
You have to commute.
Okay, any other questions?
Of course, if he's in the kitchen, he just walks outside on the stairs. It's not that bad.
Okay, let's, let's go through our criteria. So, the first one is, can the benefit that you are seeking from this variance be achieved by any other feasible means?
It's just, the building, so, you know, the shape of the property is just so weird that it's, the only way to be profitable is to go up. You can't go, you know, wire, dirty, tight, a bed is probably going to pad his properties in old village.
Yes, it's, it's an interesting shape.
And financially, to live there and to work 100-hour weeks, if he wants to be on-site, it's just to run a restaurant, you guys know how tight it is, you're...
I don't really trust anyone here to be my assistant manager, running while I'm not there, so this is my baby, I got to be there on top of it.
Okay. Is, so, you know, I think we can kind of discuss this, is there an undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties?
No.
I think it'll be great to have it sort of even with the properties.
Yeah. I mean, does anybody have any concerns about that criterion? The next one, is the request substantial? And that's, yeah, it is. Will this request have an adverse physical or environmental effect? I think it actually has a positive effect.
I think it has a very positive effect. And the poor surface adds to that.
Yeah. And, and just the fact that it's sort of consistent with the look of Main Street. And the final one, is this a self-created hardship with a lot that size and that shape?
I think we're lucky to have this really nifty project.
Yeah, so...
So, it's the opposite.
Yeah. So, would someone like to make a motion to have a public hearing on July 8th, 2014, at 7:00 PM?
Say.
Okay, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so, your next step then will be a public hearing next month. And I believe that the planning board is, has already sent this to the county?
Yes.
Because they're on 299, so they got to get a county planning board.
The ZBA and the planning board.
July 8th. Okay, so, but it's already been sent, right? Good.
Yeah, it will be on the July 8th.
Okay, good. Oh, excellent, okay. And they, they meet before we do?
Yeah, they meet the first one Saturday.
Excellent, okay.
So, we'll, we'll hear about it July 8th.
July 8th. It will be July 8th?
Yeah.
Right? Gotcha. Okay, very good.
All right.
Great, thank you.
To be known, in fact, because of the whole, oh, if I can...
Wow.
I have, they, 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 there's nothing, I guess, not essential, but you might be better.
Yeah, absolutely. You guys, you could take, no, anyone else from the table?
You know, I think if we have them here at July 8th, I mean, we like being organized enough, but it's a lot of paper.
Yes, and I can email it.
Yeah, that, people get them fast.
Are you reading?
Nothing.
Oh, you need that.
Moving right along?
Yeah, it's hard to do, it's... So, I think we're going to be, right, and it's, well, it's, yeah, I, I, that was, I'm just looking to the tree.
So, let me ask our students, do you guys have any questions about what just happened?
Well, no worries. I picked out a few things.
Okay. Basically, what has happened is this gentleman wants to make a change to his property, and it's a fairly oddly shaped property. It's shaped literally like an hourglass.
It's Yanni's.
It's, it's Yanni's Restaurant.
Okay.
And...
So, you know how small it is?
Thank you.
Yeah. And so, because they've got this very small piece of property, and they want to put more square footage on it than the code allows, they need to come to us and explain why it is they need to do this. And we have five criteria that we're to consider. So, that was the last thing I just went through, where we read out five questions, which were, is it going to be a change to the neighborhood? Was there another way of doing this that could achieve the same end without requiring a variance? Is it going to have an effect on the neighborhood? Is it going to have an effect on the environment? And is the situation self-created? And that was a lot that was zoned before they had zoning. I mean, it was created before they had zoning, and it's the oddest lot I've ever seen. Have you guys seen anything?
Only one has seen some real odd lots.
I gave them my standard drawing, so...
Oh, good, okay.
If you want to put sign here.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can do that.
Well, this is, this is all they need to be different from.
Well, it's up to them. So, the next item on the agenda is fairly quick. Do I have a motion to approve the meetings from, the minutes from May 13th, 2014? You do.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any corrections?
We like it.
Okay. I think you should not vote on this.
I was just saying, I wasn't there.
Okay, so, all in favor? Any, any nays? No. One abstention, thank you. I want to ask a really quick question about the form that we looked at last time. Do, do we need to do anything about this?
If you are fine with it, then I will cast along, use it.
Yes.
I think, did everybody have a chance to look at the proposed new form?
Yeah. We voted it was hunky-dory, and the, the village board doesn't have to do anything to it, does it?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's do it.
We'll just put it on the website.
You want to approve this one?
Yeah, if, if, if everybody's in agreement and it doesn't have to go to the village, I will see if, and...
I have seen it.
You have seen it, yes, okay, good. So, I don't know quite how we say what this is.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised area variance application for the ZBA.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
What's the motion?
To approve this new form to substitute our previous in executive session? Yeah, I think this would fit under executive session, because it is a legal situation. You think, no?
I think you could discuss it outside of executive session.
Okay, so, the question is, do we have any questions about this before we decide to agree to it? Is there anything that we want to get clarification about? Do we feel the need to ask some questions of an attorney?
Yes.
Okay, and, well, could we ask some questions of a planner?
I don't know, I don't know these people, and I would like to say what expertise you have in the field of zoning and appeal.
These people don't work?
This is SECR.
People being, being the planning board?
No, this...
Oh, no, 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 no. We're talking about the memorandum of agreement between the zoning board of the case and the planning.
The planning, there is a proposed, it's memorandum of agreement.
Proposed memorandum of agreement, and part of it, I think we're all okay with. The first part is saying that if an appeal or application is for an area variance for a single family or two-family residence, and it does not involve a planning board application for site approval, special permit approval, or subdivision approval, that the planning board's expertise is not required. In other words, we don't need to send someone to the planning board before they come to us. So, we would then be making our decision without a planning board recommendation, and we would be relying upon the building department for their recommendations.
My concern is with the document as a whole, not necessarily the specifics about it, because it's a legally binding document, so my question is, isn't, you know, I'm not asking questions specifically about points in it.
Yes.
I just want confirmation that it is appropriate for us as the ZBA to delegate this authority or the primary responsibility for this to the planning board.
And I'd like to hear Bren's opinion before we go down the road too far. I looked in my files and came up with some things that made me feel comfortable with it, but, okay.
Make you feel, what, begin, make you feel comfortable or that?
Bren, you have any thoughts on this?
I, we'll let you talk first, and then I will gather my thoughts while you're talking, Ms. Dab.
Okay.
You said you had some thoughts that made you feel comfortable.
Yes, I went through planning board basics back in the old days. I don't, no, but this is, and it talks about the powers and duties of the planning board, and then the ZBA, and then talks a little bit about SECR, and it's according to this, which is from the New York Planning Federation training. The, the planning board's duties, power to advise in matters concerning planning and development, and regulatory powers delegated by the local governing board. And that could be such things as site plan review, special use permits, signs, historic preservations, architectural review, also under the power to advise in matters concerning its zoning, development, comprehensive plans, budgets, recreation, variance requests, site plan review, subdivision. And the ZBA's basic function is to hear appeals and grant relief from the strict application of local zoning regulations. All appeals to the ZBA are adversarial proceedings, there are always two necessary parties in order to invoke the ZBA's appellate jurisdiction, a decision must have been issued by an enforcement officer, yada, yada. And then it talks about SECR. SECR is quite an extensive and can be quite time-consuming determination. I think it is closer in nature to the kinds of work that the planning board is used to doing by the nature of its regular run-of-the-mill duties. This takes it to quite a different level.
As far as the SECR process is concerned, I think it makes sense that generally if a project is looking at planning board and ZBA, both planning board and ZBA approval, generally the planning board will take lead agency anyway, so this just says they're automatically lead agency, we don't need to go through that paperwork anymore. That's right. For the first bullet point on this memo, they talk about an application for an area variance that does not involve a planning board application. Since the village intends that all planning actions go to the planning board, then I'm not positive that that is going to be necessary. Does that make sense?
Let it all go to them, and then they can refer as usual.
Because there's going to be nothing that doesn't require...
Planning board.
Planning board review.
That's fine with me, yeah.
That's right, okay, so then...
They know you needs to be rewritten.
Right, yeah.
So, I think, I think the second part is great, and the first part has issues because our intent is that all planning actions go to the planning board.
It just simplifies it.
Right.
It simplifies the process to let it...
And I'm, my inclination is to say, yeah, this is fine with me. It just seems to me that given the nature of our body and our responsibilities, that it's appropriate for us to have on record our attorneys saying, you know...
I think that's a good point, yeah.
Absolutely, but you also want to suggest to the planning board that they remove paragraph one in its own... Yeah, and that is separate from what...
Second paragraph.
That's separate from what I'm, I'm saying.
The second, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm assuming that we will be told, yeah, this is, you know, go ahead, and I just think for the record, it's appropriate that we get that decision from our attorney.
Yeah, I, I feel comfortable about that, I, you know, this is something that I don't feel like I've got a really good grasp of what exactly we're doing, I, it seems okay on the surface, but I'd like to hear a counterargument if there is one, so...
It's something, it seems to me that the attorney could just give us in writing or email.
Right.
Yeah.
Once it's been amended.
Yeah.
Amended.
Yeah.
You could send it to her there and just say, delete that, and get her to do it.
Okay, all right, so, I understand, I think what we want to do, part of how I deal with this is going to depend on what happens in executive session, so...
Good.
If there's nothing else, I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss a matter concerning legal representation.
And personnel.
And personnel.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, let me just explain to the...